... forty-three cents. So this will clean up this account and get it back to zero before the end of this year.
Thank you. That amount is different than what you read in your warrant copies, but since it's less, it could be so. I would post an article discussion.
Mr. Moderator.
Yes, Mr. Newell.
The Finance Committee unanimously recommends that this article be passed. Where we're supposing the funds from has an ample unexpended balance. This year, we have been able to reduce expenditures for vocational education. And we fully agree with the necessity of covering these expenditures. This is the smart way to do it. This is an easy way to do it, and we recommend it.
Thank you, Mr. Newell. You have a ready discussion. Are you ready to vote? All in favor of transferring three thousand nine sixty-three and forty-three cents from vocational school expenses to Winter Road, say aye.
Aye.
Any votes? Any objections? That passes unanimously. Thank you. Article two. This town will vote to transfer up to ten thousand dollars from vocational school expenses to an account to be established for the purposes of purchasing a police department traffic speed trailer or act relative thereto. Is there a motion?
Yes, Mr. Moderator.
What's our?
I move the town transfer ten thousand dollars from vocational school expenses to an account to be established for the purpose of purchasing a police department traffic speed trailer.
Thank you. Is there a second?
There's a second.
Second? Okay. Would you like to discuss this? Explain this?
Yes. This particular motion came about based on a discussion that the chief and I had after the annual town meeting. And it occurred to me that this particular kind of speed trailer that, you know, shows how fast you're going and logs what's happening has been around for some time at different times come up. And I said to him, and I wanted to be able to bring that to the Select Board as something we could possibly do before the year ended, because there are some funds that possibly we could move to an account to pay for this. And so I did bring it to the Select Board, hence it's here at this time. Last week, by accident, I did discover in Select Board minutes in the summer of 2009, under the Police Department liaison report, that at that time, they had received a grant that was in the sum of three thousand dollars. And they had discussed at the time the possibility of putting it aside for a speed, sorry, speed trailer. I'm not sure what happened to that money, but I just, it verifies that that conversation has happened from time to time to get that particular piece of equipment for the Police Department.
Thank you. Finance Committee. Mr. Murray.
Mr. Moderator. The Finance Committee unanimously recommends against this article as presented, and instead we would move to amend. In our amendment, if it's appropriate to offer that at this time, is that we would move that the town transfer five thousand dollars from vocational school expenses to an account to be established for the purpose of purchasing a police department traffic speed trailer. And I can explain further if you wish.
I'm going to solicit a second to your motion to amend from ten thousand to five thousand. But I want to ask a question, I think I'd like to ask it to everyone, before we hear a second. Because it dawned on me this year that perhaps we spend more time than we have to when the Finance Committee is moving to amend. Perhaps a better policy is for the Finance Committee to state what its position is. You think five thousand dollars would be better than ten thousand dollars? You would explain that when you're asked to, to explain the Finance Committee's position. And then waiting to see if a motion to amend happens. Now, we don't have to do it that way. We don't have to do it anyway, in particular, but I'm just wondering whether that's a better source of action. It might be more, because we end up spending a lot of time just on the amendment, on discussing whether to amend, instead of the merits of your argument.
With your permission, I'll release my field.
You don't have to. This mine is an inquiry.
Understood. But I could do it the other way around quickly, I think, by saying, we would recommend unanimously against this as presented, for the following reasons. Would that be helpful?
Does anybody want to chime in on this discussion? Would you rather be in a motion form, or rather just hear from the Finance Committee and see if a motion is forthcoming? Anybody have a position? You're looking coy with your head up.
Coy? I haven't heard that in all my life. I thought it was, I think, as far as my concern, any way we do it, that we make progress is fine, and it could be six of one, half a dozen of the other, it really could. Everybody's going to get a chance to speak.
Your choice. Do you like your proposal or your motion, or you'd like to just explain your position?
Let me explain our reasoning first, I'll say, and then I'll turn to the amendment as soon. It's true, as Mr. Newell pointed out, that there are in fact ample funds within the vocational school expenses, unexpended funds. So there's sources of monies available. And the trailer concept to us does seem sound. It has been discussed earlier in the past. It seems to us a useful concept, particularly in the light of limited manpower or staffing with police force. But the cost of such equipment to us seems a bit unclear. In checking with some vendors, I found one vendor who talks about having sold a similar kind of trailer as we understand it, but understand there are many features and options you can put on such a trailer. And this person talked about having sold one recently for five thousand eight hundred dollars, another one, nine thousand eight hundred dollars, and one that I think, from all I could understand of the earlier discussion as presented to us, was similarly equipped to what we're talking about, with a statistical package that you can do some analysis, and that is a solar powered device plus the batteries you remain. That came in at around seven thousand eight hundred dollars. So ten thousand to us seemed a bit more than perhaps needed. And this also seemed to us to be a prime candidate for the sort of thing where if we put up five thousand dollars, there might possibly be some kind of matching grant for equipment. In the past, the Police Department has sought grants and oftentimes gets funded at the state level for some kind of traffic device that would be helpful to us as a town. So those are the reasons, I'm thinking the main, that we have concluded that we think ten thousand may be more than is needed. And we are thereby offering as an amendment five thousand, with the expectation that there could be perhaps a grant. And failing a grant application at some point in the future, if it's not materialized, we'd be willing to reconsider the cost of this and perhaps put more money available for it.
Okay. So let's proceed, basically, understanding we now have an agreement, and then it comes forth. Is that fair? Are you comfortable with that, Finance Committee?
David? Run that by us one more time.
Let's hear where the discussion leads us, in terms of, everyone understands the position you'd like to...
Is this within the limitations of Robert's rules?
Yes. Not within the expanded non-limitations of the...
Okay, so we don't have a...
We have the discussion...
We don't have a motion on the floor?
Well, I interrupted before it was seconded. If somebody wants to make a motion, then we'll have a motion if it's seconded.
So how, under what authority are we discussing this?
We're discussing the main motion with a recommendation by our Finance Committee, our elected Finance Committee, that says, don't do ten, do five, and we'll see where the discussion lands. That's what I'm...
So we're discussing the main motion?
Yes, which is ten. Last one, your best clear. Mr. Clark.
Brian Clark, Apple Valley. I'd be interested to hear a response from the chief, who I think has researched this as to what his feeling about the request is and what the Finance Committee has just recommended.
Okay, the chief is not a registered voter in Asheville. Any objection? Chief, please.
Thank you. I looked at, I believe, I've spoken with about four different companies. I did have one bid that I've got almost two years ago, which unfortunately, they haven't responded to me. That came in at about seventy-eight hundred dollars. Everything I've researched recently was between nine thousand dollars and about, I think it was ninety-eight, everything was under ten thousand. These particular units gave us the features we were looking for as far as being solar-powered. Solar-powered unit is about, has about nine hundred dollars to the cost. Also had a battery backup in the event we have extended period of time with, without adequate sunshine. It also gave us the ability to analyze data from the trailer in order to properly deploy our officers into areas where they would be needed. Also serves the purpose of being a traffic counting device, which could be helpful. As many of you know, there is a move to designate Route 116 as a scenic byway. As part of that, I'm trying to get some upgrades to our crosswalks in the community as far as signage and markings. The ability to get accurate traffic counts would be helpful toward that end. We did get a traffic count last year through Furcog. It took six months for us to, from the time we requested that, in order to have it deployed, and it was deployed out here on Main Street up by the park and also over on Spruce Corner Road. But all that did is get us traffic counts. It didn't get us speeds or anything like that. So the trailers that I've researched would give us the ability to do all of that. One in particular, which I really like, came with a, it actually comes with a PDA where you can download the information at the, at the trailer without having to remove the information from it.
Sorry, I have a PDA.
Personal digital system. It's like a BlackBerry, for lack of, it's not a BlackBerry, but it's a, what they call a P, it's a personal computer. And you can actually download it, bring it into the police station, it could be downloaded to my computer, give us a printout, would give us speeds, peak times, things of that nature. And that also came in under ten thousand dollars. So I think something like this, if you're going to expend the funds for it, you should be getting the one that is going to give us the best bang for our buck and allow us to utilize it to the best of its, best of our ability in order to reduce exposure to our residents from speeding cars.
Thank you. Mr. Clark.
One of the other comments was the possibility of getting matching grants. I'm curious about your feeling about that.
Sure. One issue we have, I've applied or tried to get grants before under Traffic Safety Grant. The problem is, and I guess it's a good problem to have, is we simply don't have enough car pedestrian accidents in Asheville. So if anybody would like to volunteer, I suppose, no, I won't. But really, I mean, it's a downside to it, because the towns where they have a lot of pedestrian, Northampton's an example, they, I don't know how many a week they get, I know when I drive through Northampton on my way to work, I'm probably almost victimized a dozen times. But, so they're really looking for the communities that have a problem as far as matching grants for the traffic safety. There is a grant I spoke to before that's available through MIA. It's, there's two grants available. One is a ten thousand dollar grant, the other one is a five thousand dollar grant. The one that we would possibly have a shot at would be the five thousand dollar grant. Problem with grants is you apply for them along with a bunch of other communities, and then it's decided by a committee whether your particular grant has merit or not. And then after many, many months go by, you hear whether you're getting it or not. So from a time standpoint, grant might not be the best way to go as far as being able to get something in place that we can utilize this, this summer. So, but like I said, there is the five thousand dollar MIA grant that is out there. There's also the ten thousand dollar MIA grant, which I'm going to be looking at for some other equipment that we weren't able to get through our budget, but we're going to give it a shot through that. So, but, you know, I continue to research grants and see what's out there, but with the economy being what it is on a national basis, these grants are extremely competitive right now. They're very, very difficult to get, so...
Chief, could you let those citizens who don't know, know what MIA is?
Mary?
She's our insurance. She's our insurance. It's Massachusetts Municipal Insurance, inter-local insurance.
Yeah, that's it.
Okay. Mrs. Murray.
Carolyn Murray, Stonehenge Road. I'd like to ask someone, probably on the Finance Committee, what would happen to this money if we didn't vote it in, but it go into our free cash at the end of the year? And I'm still concerned about the amounts in our stabilization accounts and other accounts. I know we have a big loan for the ice storm, and I haven't heard about any of that money coming in. So, and every little bit helps is, you know, you have to weigh, and I'd just like to know what would happen to this money? And is it possible to just put, to have an amendment for it to go into the stabilization account?
Ooh, townhouse question. Let's deal with the first one. What would happen to this money?
If this were not expended, either in the five thousand or the ten thousand dollar amount, that would end up as going into surplus funds at the end of the year, which would be qualified for certification sometime this fall as free cash for the town. So if we didn't spend it, it would be unexpended monies from the vocational school line, and that would end up going into free cash. But that's not certified until the fall sometime. And as to your question about stabilization, I'm going back to our budget discussions at annual town meeting.
Perhaps I could...
I'm sorry.
No, I would rule that out of order, that's not within the scope of the article. To put it as a stabilization would require a two-thirds vote. People didn't get notice of it. So that's a big deal, so I don't think we can do that.
Just as a point of information, at the annual town meeting, we voted to transfer two hundred thousand dollars into the stabilization account, which had, I believe, two hundred and sixteen in it already. So somewhere north of four hundred thousand, current, oh, as of July 1st, or in the new fiscal year. That tells you what I saw when...
Is it in, Mr. Clark? I'm sorry, Mr. Newell, then, Mr. Clark.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Yeah, take it.
In our discussions about this warrant article, we, I think, were, as a committee, in agreement that this was a type of article that should properly be brought before in the annual meeting within, within the budget of the department as opposed to a special town meeting as an afterthought, where often there are very few people who are going to make the decision. Let me repeat something that our chairman, Mr. Murray, said, which was that the Finance Committee feels that this, this is a good idea. I think the primary objective objection that the Finance Committee had was that this article would secure the funds necessary for this expenditure entirely from taxation. Now, I'm informed, for example, that, I think many of you have seen Conway as a similar unit. I understand that Conway's was entirely funded by a Commonwealth grant. We feel that it's unfair to the people of Asheville to say, this should be funded entirely by taxation. And so our position, I think we see is a compromise in essence, that it's reasonable to make available some funds from taxation, but to challenge our department and to challenge the Commonwealth for that matter, to see if we can meet halfway. If that could happen, that would save half of, you know, there's a tendency here in Asheville at the end of the fiscal year, when there are little amounts unexpended in this pot and this pot and this pot, to pee it away. And Caroline Murray made a good point. Are we taking potential contingency funds from the future to do that? So our position again is, you know, we perceive it, we support the idea, we feel an effort ought to be made first, to see if we can secure funding from non-taxation sources. If that can be done, great. And if it can't be done, then I think I would support at the next annual town meeting an appropriation entirely from taxation, and that could finally be as well.
Mr. Clark?
Backtrack a little bit. Caroline, you brought up the point about the loan for the ice storm. We just got a notification Monday night that we were being forwarded a hundred and eighty-six thousand dollars, I believe, and change against our hundred and ninety-six thousand dollar loan. So if that hits before the fiscal year, those are all good things, because that money was borrowed in anticipation of that money coming in. So that, what we're talking about with general finances, that's an important point that made me sleep better Monday night. The, yes, they were, matter of fact. The Select Board was unanimous in the idea, and posted voting to put this article on the agenda, the article on the warrant. I do support the idea of having a trailer. I know a lot of the communities that I drive through, it has, it has a positive effect on me, okay? And I'm hoping that I'm not the exception to the rule. But I really do agree with the Finance Committee's recommendation, that I feel that it's proven, proven fiscally for the town to really make a big attempt to try to garner some funds from other sources, be it MIA or state grants or federal policing grants, whatever's out there, to try to, to try to fund this unit. It would, it would actually be in a delay. I mean, if we voted to pull ten thousand dollars tonight, next week, somebody could hitch onto a trailer and bring it home. Or tomorrow, at least. But the, this may mean a delay until next summer or next spring. But we have been a great number of summers and springs and falls without a trailer at this point. But I do think, I do think the idea is a good idea. I think it can help the Police Department put their manpower to use more efficiently with the information it can generate. I think it will have a positive influence. A lot of the discussion on this has been about Main Street. And sure, it should be on Main Street, one of these trailers, but I think it can have a positive effect on a great number of other streets in town. I'm thinking of Crane River Road and Cape Street and out in Watson's Spruce Corner and all those sorts of things. So I do support the Finance Committee's recommendation.
Thank you. But I think, Chief, you have your hand up. Since you've spoken once, I'll give Mr. Wilson, we'll get back to you.
You still working Williamsburg, Ron? I'm in favor of this trailer. I live on a road there, it is posted twenty-five, and I don't mind if they go on thirty, I don't even mind thirty-five, but I hate fifty-five and sixty. It happens every day, two. I think two, the reason I'm supporting the ten is costs go up. We spend ten now, and we spend five next year. And we still hope we get a grant. And let's remember that state money is our tax money too. It's not free. It is tax money. Thank you.
Do that.
In all fairness to the chief, I'd like to explain that I will bear responsibility that when we went into the budget season, he and I never discussed a trailer. I never brought it up. I was aware that this has been a conversation from year to year, but failed to mention it. And when I met with him after annual town meeting, it was not he, it was I who sat there and said, oh, what about a trailer? Because there's Main Street, and if the trailer is monitoring Main Street, then the proves are to be somewhere else, perhaps over at the lake in the summer when there are issues going on over there that people would call and ask for extra coverage. So I am in support of getting it, because I think it could facilitate a lot of helpful information. It could also be an officer in a certain sense that's keeping traffic slowing down in areas where we want it to. I think the statistics will be important in terms of how much speeding there is, because while there are complaints in different areas, we may find that something's happening we're not aware of. He can use the statistics in applications for other grants. Hopefully, that would give us information to substantiate the question. So, have any thoughts in that here?
By the way, gentlemen, we have a respect in the meeting, and those who can't hear or see, we ask people to rise and say their name and where they live. I think we could be seated tonight and say our names and where we live. I have Mr. Cranston next. I'm going to get back to you, Chief, and let you have your right to speak.
Dr. Cranston, still in drive. I know what is required when we're writing grants, but oftentimes, if it covers more than one particular subject, I think there are some traffic updates that could be done right here on Main Street that might help our traffic. And one of them, I think was mentioned by someone here, crosswalk updates. I think we need more than those that are already here, for instance, especially during the fall festival. And the marking of the road here in the center of town, I think if you were to do something very similar as to what was done in Greenfield Mountain, move everything, everything over eighteen inches. That way, you'd have room to park, you'd have room to drive, and you could have more room to drive if you just moved it a little more. So I don't know how you go about doing that, and you'd have to get rid of this red strip that was put down. But anyway, things like that, I think with traffic safety signs, whatever it is you call it, trailer, is a good idea here in town. I think it does have an effect on whether you want it to or not.
Thank you, Mrs. Johnson.
How much in Ashford, Asheville? Mike, I have two questions. One is, Ted, when you researched the loan that was, let's say, seven thousand dollars, does that do what this ten thousand dollar loan does?
Well, I'm not entirely clear, because we haven't done a point-by-point comparison of specifications, but when the one that's being proposed for our town was mentioned, two of the features that were underscored were the fact that it's solar powered and that it had this data collection and analysis package by which you can, I think, get car count, but also number of speeders, how much over and under, and stuff like that. And when I talk to NPH Industries, again, I'm not sure where they're located, there are several of these companies and vendors out there. They're the one company that I got information from, there were two other calls, I've not come back from other companies, but they told me that the seven thousand seven hundred eighty-dollar unit they just sold to Northfield, Massachusetts, it included a trailer, it had two backup batteries, it had a data collection package they call Speed View, is their, I guess their brand name. It was solar powered. Price included shipping, it included speed signs and so on, which to me sounded like it was comparable to what was being talked about. Now, there are many other features. For example, they indicated, they recently sold one in New York State that had everything, all the features that they have in their catalog, I guess, including strobe lights for ninety-eight hundred dollars. They sold one up in Vermont for five thousand eight hundred dollars, which they said is a pretty stripped-down version. They said they, AR Massachusetts actually got one of these that has a message board on it, but that cost nineteen thousand dollars. And it just strikes me that you can get all varieties of these. So the price information to me seemed a little squishy. And again, I haven't done the research, the chief has, he's probably got more information, more active comparisons and all, but that caused me a little vague as to kind of what these things really cost me.
Well, would it make sense, would it make sense for the chief to just sort of say what it is that he feels he absolutely would like to have on this? And then we do further research to see whether there is a company that can provide what he wants at a cheaper price?
Okay. I'd like a little clarification myself, if I may. The original proposed article was that the transfer is up to ten thousand dollars. The actual motion was to transfer ten thousand... The actual motion was to transfer $10,000. Today is the 26th of June. The end of the fiscal year comes the end of this week. So that whatever we want to do to deal with this fiscal year, we have to do to deal with this fiscal year tonight. We don't have time to re-look. Right? That's my understanding, is that correct? Okay, so, we're talking about transferring $10,000, and obviously, the meeting is free to suggest or give directions for, to our representatives, and to our chief, that there should be a...
But, Mr. Murray, a point of information or clarification. If it's, if it's gonna happen in the near future, it would be important to vote it tonight so the money could be transferred prior to the fiscal year. But that does not preclude that we buy it in July or even early August after we've had a chance to do some more shopping and specking it out and that sort of thing. In other words, we can appropriate the money in this fiscal year, and this separate line we carry forward so we could get to it down the road. Like, that's a, we're not under the gun. We haven't put ourselves necessarily under the gun.
Right, I have this proposal on deck, but I just want to be really clear. If we appropriated the $10,000 tonight, there's to be grant applications and all sorts of shopping and everything else. We don't have to spend the $10,000, right? We just appropriated that money for it, but it doesn't have to be spent on something.
I'm sure there's a difference of opinion. I mean, the chances are that if we appropriated, it would be spent, and our chances of getting any grant money would vastly be less.
Oh, I see, I see. Could we have to disclose that? Is this Mrs. Eisenberg's question, because Mr. Coler was on deck. We haven't heard...
Put me in your order of speakers.
Is that where you are?
I'd like to make the amendment.
Okay, who are you, are you... Mr. Coler?
Ron Coler, Massachusetts, Bailey Road. I support this as it was presented. We live in a somewhat unique position. Couple of state highways running through, 112, 116. I've been on Main Street and seen cars go very fast around little kids. I've seen Cape Street cars go very fast. And yes, they do work for me. When I see them, I remind myself not only to slow down, but to be in control of the vehicle that I'm driving. It's a little more than slowing down, it's being aware, people are living here, and so on and so forth. A piece of equipment like this is $10,000. If it's, if life was 10 years, it's $1,000 a year, simple math. One accident, just one accident to any of our grandchildren or children, it's not worth even talking about, okay? Safety really should be in the foremost of our mind. And Murphy's Rule says, "You put this off till next year, and something will happen this year." And yes, we've been very fortunate up to now, for a number of reasons. But I didn't wear chainsaw chaps for 30 years, and I had an accident. I don't even start my chainsaw without chaps in. So be careful saying that just because we haven't had it, that it'll be that way going forward. And I support this. I think it's a very small cost. And just to remind you, I'm fiscal conservative. We have 400, north of 400,000 in stabilization after July 1st. Come certification of our free cash, we'll probably have some, around 150,000. I can't tell you, because I'm not the certifier of the free cash. But without a lot of extra people going to Votech School, and so on and so forth, we feel pretty comfortable, both boards, with that number. So I don't want to be any foolish, but I don't think this is any place for nickel and diming it. I'd love to get a grant, I'm a big proponent of grants, but I think we could be a little foolish by trying to save and delay this. That's my personal opinion.
How does the chief, I understand Mr. Murray has a motion to make, the same one...
All the...
Okay. Mr. Murray, you'd like to move to amend the $10,000 to $5,000?
Yes, I'd like to amend the motion, as we've talked about previously, so that the $10,000 meets $5,000.
Okay, there's a second?
Second motion.
Okay, discussion, well, again, one of the situations where we're discussing the main motion and the proposed amendment, but discussion on the proposed amendment. And Chief, you still have, if you'd like to speak?
Yeah, just one more point of information than anything. Since town meeting, we actually had a, there was an accident coming through the road last week. It was prior to our people coming on duty, state police took care of it. It was directly attributable to speeding. A very young girl went flying off the road, about a half mile up from 116. We've gotten speeding complaints on Buckland Road, Williamsburg Road, Hill Street, Main Street, Cape Street. Diane stopped a car last week on Cape Street going 78 by the school. So we have problem in town. And the problem we have is, I've been out for the last week or two, and I've been running radar quite a bit on those aforementioned streets, but for whatever reason, when I'm out there, I'm not seeing it. It's not, it's not happening. But that doesn't mean it's not occurring. So I think what that trailer will allow us to do is be smarter, as far as how we're deploying things. And it also helps, because people and residents realize, they may not see us out there when they happen to be looking, but if they drive down Buckland Road and they see the speed trailer out there, they're like, "Oh, the police are, they're paying attention to me. They're listening to what, you know, my complaint is." And, I mean, a lot of what we do is being responsive to the public and public relations. And I just think that, aside from the fact that this particular unit will provide us with a ton of data, and allow us to be a lot smarter in the way we do our job, I think it will also address some of the concerns of some of the residents of town that their concerns aren't being addressed. And I'll be honest with you, and I think it was brought up, the fact that this wasn't included in the budget. Well, quite honestly, I didn't bother, because I knew it was going to be another very difficult budget year, as was proven. And in order to try and prioritize things, with the $10,000, $9,800 cost, I just didn't feel that the trailer at this point in time was the way to go. And until Paula brought it up, and going about it this way, I said, "I'd love to try it." So that's why we're here tonight.
Okay, thank you. Discussion on the motion to amend specifically, from $10,000 to $5,000, Mr. Field.
I'm against the $5,000 first, but to talk about grants. As you know, I was on the fire department for too many years. The grants now are drying up, pure and simple. The chief and myself, when I was chief, I had a grant for three years to replace the little truck. We never got it. Why? We did not have enough calls, just like the chief here. And the grants, they'll take anywhere from, I just put one in about two weeks ago, and it'd be at least six months before I even hear, and this is just a state of Massachusetts, whether we're gonna have that grant or not. And probably, being a small town, we won't have it. It's really sickening to know that we don't get these grants. But I feel very strongly that, I'm against the $5,000. I say go with the pen, and whatever it's gonna cost, if it's cost 9,000, fine. But we'll have the $10,000 so the chief can find what he needs for the town.
Thank you. Further discussion on the motion to amend? Ready to vote on the motion to amend? Okay, all those in favor of reducing the amount to transfer from vocational school expenses to an account to be established for the purpose of purchasing a leased apartment, such as speed trailer from $10,000, reducing it to $5,000? If you're in favor of that reduction, say aye.
Aye.
If you oppose, say nay.
Nay.
Anybody disagree with me? I say the nays have it.
I doubt the vote.
You want to count?
I doubt the vote.
Okay. George. Okay. All those in favor of reducing the amount to be transferred from $10,000 to $5,000? In other words, you're voting for the proposed amendment? Raise your hand, please, and keep it up. All right, may I put your hands down? All those opposed to the proposed amendment, please raise your hand and keep it up. Okay, may I put them down? Looks like seven yeses, 17 nays, the motion to amend fails. Thank you. Back to the making motion. Any further discussion? I want to pass the two. Ready to vote? All those in favor of transferring $10,000 from vocational school expenses to an account in order to purchase the speed trailer, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Nay.
Nay.
The motion carries. Anybody disagree with that? Okay, thank you, good discussion. Article three, sees the town of Port Tappus transfer $27 from vocational school expenses to municipal town clerk, or act relative to the proposed motion?
Mr. Murray, you have your motion. I move that the town transfer $127 from vocational school expenses to municipal town clerk.
Is there a second?
Explanation before, okay, this is a relatively easy one. I think during the presidential election, and over the course of the past year, as long as I've been president, just table, the clerk has been reminded to charge all of her time and extra time appropriately. And if you would recall, she is an hourly employee until the new year, where she becomes salary employee. And there was a little extra associated with the presidential election, and as directed, she charged it. Since that time, she has not charged any extra time whatsoever, and kept within her hours. So this $127, if we don't vote in favor, her last paycheck will have to be reduced by $127 to keep her from deficits by the end of the fiscal year. So the Select Board has put this forth to take care of some ill-rented bookkeeping.
Thank you, Finance Committee.
Yeah, we recommend a five, nothing.
Ready to vote? All those in favor of transferring $127 from vocational school expenses to municipal town clerk, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any extensions? That passes unanimously. And finally, article four, sees the town of Port Tappus transfer up to $2,500 from grant program income to an account to be established for the purpose of town common maintenance, or act relative to the proposed motion?
Mr. Moderator.
Mr. Carter.
Mr. Moderator, I move the town transfer $2,500 from grant program income to an account to be established for the purpose of town common maintenance.
Is there a second? So, second. Any second? Mr. Carter, an explanation, please?
Well, we've got this great town common, and we're very close to having it all paid for as soon as the clock ticks to the next fiscal year. And the very dry weather last year, not uncommon to Mylawn and several others. It really took a beating, a lot of grubs and skunks, and so on and so forth, and digging and pum. And anyone that doesn't notice the terrible shape that the sod is in on the town common, we need the police trailer to slow us down so we can see it. The, there's some really tremendous bare spots there. And we're nine years into owning it, and the maintenance really has been that we've got a great bunch of volunteers that know it. I mean, there really has been no town dollars spent on that common that I'm aware of at all. But we need to reestablish that sod, and I really believe, I've been doing some research on this, getting a soil sample and sending it in, so we can figure out what we need. I think with some volunteer labor and so forth, that we can do a lot of this. And the idea of this $2,500 is just to pay for some of the materials that may be lime, fertilizer, and certainly some grass seed. During the real rainy spell, I thought it was getting greener, and I walked up there one night, and yes, it was, the weeds were all coming up in it. So, but how exactly soon this will happen, you know, should it happen relatively quickly, or should we wait until fall, when you would generally do a season like that, is yet to be seen. But we certainly have this right in the middle of town, and I think we should, we should get right after it to try to get it shaped up.
Thank you, Finance Committee.
Mr. Moderator, we recommend this article, by a vote of four to zero, there's one extension. And we're particularly attracted to the concept of volunteer labor.
And you addressed that to me, didn't you? This is kind of... Discussion? No, you're ready to vote? Mr. Coler?
Nicole, Bailey Road. I think it's a great idea, but I would urge you to wait till after Fall Festival. I mean, it makes sense, it's just gonna get, all the tender grass will be trawled upon, then the rains will come, and we'll all set.
Mrs. Parker, can I vote? No, you're not gonna vote. Anything else? Okay, it's Coler question here. All those in favor of transferring up to $2,500 from grant program income to an account to be established for the purposes of town common maintenance, say aye.
Aye.
All the...
Any exception? That passes unanimously. Thank you. Before we adjourn, this is the end of the fiscal year. I'm always astonished at how much work our, almost all volunteer boards do, and I think it's a bit struggling in my program. But here, most adjourned.
So will...
Second. In favor?
Aye.
Somebody crazy doesn't see a vote. Thank you all for coming.